This is the Buffalo Community Podcast, all about the greatest small town in the USA, the people in it, and how it all works together. Here are your hosts Tyler Reese and Mark Benzer.
Hey everybody, it is the Buffalo Community Podcast. I'm Tyler, sitting next to Mark, Luke's behind the screen here. And we're coming at you with the city council candidates and the mayor mayoral candidates. This is actually going to be a two-part series. So if you are seeing this as a the mayors or the candidates, those are going to be two different videos, but they're going to be running simultaneously. But right now, all the interviews are done.
Yep.
So I think we're both glad that's done because you and I are both not interested in politics very much, but.
We got it done.
Yeah, we got it done. And we're here because of you asking us to do this. And it's very important because we love Buffalo. We want to see it succeed. And if we can help you guys make that decision come November 8, that's what we're going to do. But right now, let's get into it. We're going to determine the order that these will go in. So again, two videos, mayors, and then candidates on the other one. All right, now to determine the order of the council candidates, we've got three labeled coins right here. One for Jameson Wakefield, one for Bradley Doll, and one for Brian Van Toff. What I'm going to do here is Odd Man is going to go first. Make sense?
Yeah, so you're gonna drop.
I'm gonna drop three of them. Odd Man out.
Make sure you shuffle them.
There's maybe going to be a couple of heads, couple of tails. That's actually not true. They can't be four of them. There's only three. But here, we'll go like this. They're all on heads. So maybe this isn't great.
I'll pick one. Shuffle them.
Ooh.
Oh, there we go.
First up, we're going to hear from Bradley Doll. And then if this lands on Brian, Brian's next, or Jameson's next. Jameson's next, and we're going to end with Brian Van Toff. So enjoy it. We really appreciate it. Go ahead and share these videos. We really appreciate it. And again, thank you for all your input and letting us be a part of it.
Absolutely.
All right. All right. Next up, we've got Bradley Doll or Brad Doll. So we already went over this, already messed up. Brad Doll, thanks for coming in. Why don't you go ahead and take a quick second to introduce yourself as a candidate for the Buffalo City Council?
Okay, yeah, I'm Bradley Doll. I'm running for the city council for Buffalo, Minnesota. I've been a longtime resident since 1975, except for four years of active duty Air Force service. We love the community, and we just thought it was time, my wife and I, that we would give back to the community. So that's why we're running for office.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time for coming in here tonight, and one being a part of the conversation that really shapes our little town. So we're going to jump right into it, is we're just going to go down here, and we might jump back and forth on some of these questions if it makes sense. What is one thing that the city is doing very well? And what is one thing that the city needs to improve upon?
I think one of the most important ones that they do well is I think we do a good job with our parks. We do, we have, do have a lot of parks. If you go around and you number them, there's quite a few. I don't know how many there are. I haven't counted them all, but there is. And then, yeah, and then we're doing a lot of good things with walking trails and trying to keep the downtown a viable asset to the community.
Sure.
Those are probably the two things I think we're doing well. As far as not doing well, I think we're spending too much money. I think it's plain and simple. And that's one of my things is try to address that and change the way we're spending money. I think we can be smarter.
Sure, sure. Let's just, let's continue down that that path a little bit, because it will, it will probably shape our next question. What are we spending too much money on? And how do you plan to battle that?
Well, I think one of the big mistakes we made is buying the golf course, and I'm glad that that got sold before we got in, even though I think we took a huge hit on selling it. It's good that we now don't have that monthly and yearly expense to upkeep and keep that thing rolling. As far as spending money, if we can try to get out of that hole, and basically be more wise with how we spend. It's kind of tough. I know a lot of people want to do stuff with their electric bill. I mean, we have, we're on contract till 2050 with the current provider. So there's not a whole lot we can do, but we can plan ahead for after that.
Yeah.
One of those things that the city council did do on the last meeting was they voted not to extend for 10 years to 2060 with the current
Sure.
provider. So, and then we're gonna, whoever's next is going to do the research on where we can acquire the utilities next. And I think we need to be in a better spot for those people who just can't afford what we're paying right now utilities. I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but there are a lot of people out there that are paycheck to paycheck. And we got to be listening to them, because if, if we don't, then what are we, we're not doing a service to the people that we need to do it for.
Sure. So I don't know if if it was caught, it'd be maybe be more debt servicing of, you know, spending the money wisely, pay down the debt before doing anything more extravagant?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
You touched a little bit on the cost of utilities. So what would be your plan to address the cost of utilities? Can they be brought down and how?
I don't know if we can do much with the electric bill, but we can work on water and sewer side of it. The gas is possibility. I mean, that's going up to the natural gas. But we'd have to check those areas and see if we can do something with lowering those costs, so that we can pass that, because it comes in the same bill, you know, the garbage bill. You know, just do some research on where we can acquire something cheaper, providing the same kind of service that we're getting, not degrade our service.
Sure.
So that we can try to pinch there, since we can't really do a lot with electric.
Sure. Okay. So downtown, everybody talks about downtown feel, everything. And obviously, the new government center is out north of town.
That's very nice, by the way, I was out there today.
Yeah, very, it's very nice. It's very, but it leaves us with a big old gray block.
Right.
What is your vision for that site? And, you know, what ideally, what would you like to see there? Now, it's a two-part question. I'm going to clarify, because I did that with Jeremiah as well, and I'll do it with all the other candidates, is ideally, what's the coolest thing you'd like, like to see there? And it may not be viable. But what's the vision of something that might be viable?
I haven't really thought much of what would I like to see, you know, using my imagination?
Sure.
I'm not that kind of a person. What I would like to see is the people that I've talked to downtown, and a lot of them are older people that live downtown. For one thing that I would like to see there is some kind of smaller grocery store, convenience store, or something. Because right now, the only place they have to go is Holiday. And that's a long walk. And some of the ladies that I've talked to, that's a long walk in the winter. Trailblazer shuts down at five o'clock at night, so they can't use Trailblazer after that. So there's got to be something that they can go to, especially if we want to build more apartments, and that's what some people's vision of that government center is going to be.
Sure.
Okay, how are we gonna, where are all those people going to go? There's going to be older people in those. Where are we going to get them?
Sure.
Make them walk again?
Sure.
And some of them can't walk, so they're stuck. Like, I've had people say, well, they can call out, and they can have stuff delivered. A lot of old people, that's not in their mindset. That's in our mindset, because we, you know, we went through COVID, and we, we go to Walmart.
The new normal.
Yeah, wow, drive up to Walmart, and they come out with your stuff. Well, totally, people can't do that either.
Sure.
Yeah. We had a write-in question from a listener here. They mentioned they moved out to Buffalo after college, and briefly lived in an apartment building before buying a house in Buffalo. Do you think there's more demand for multifamily zoning, so our growing city has more housing diversity?
I think it's a 50/50 with single-family homes and apartment buildings. If you have an apartment, you're going to be able to put up a home. I think, to me, with the new building that just went up, that's over by where I live, and then the apartments that are over there by Colburn's, but then you got that new addition that's north of the high school that's being put in. And to me, it's a 50/50. Whatever kind of housing you want, it's going to be available here in Buffalo.
Sure. So if you mean by that, I'm just trying to get, wrap my head around it. So if you've got a 100-unit complex, that kind of opens the door for like a 100-home site of like a development?
Correct. And I think it would be fill.
Sure, you think, we wouldn't have a problem filling that?
I don't think so, to a point.
Right.
Because every city is going to find its kind of neutral spot where it's not really, you know, you may have a few years, you have a few hundred more people, and then you have a few years that people move out. I mean, you're going to find that magic number of your population in your city, because you're not going to
Sure.
continue to grow, say to be like Buffalo, I don't see it at 60,000 people.
Yeah, oh, please, no.
No, I mean, because a lot of people move out here for the small town.
Yeah.
So why continue to push for a 60,000 population when it's not
Right.
it's not feasible?
I know a lot of people, when they're asking this question, they're, a lot of them are concerned about what type apartment apartments are those going to be? Are they going to be subsidized? Are they going to be market rate? I mean, do you have any idea of what, what would fit Buffalo well?
That's a good question. And I don't have that answer for you. That'd be something that would, if I was part of the city council, we would have those discussions, get with people that are in the know, on talking to other cities, hey, what are you doing? How did that work for you? I, I don't have that answer.
Well, here's a first banner news right now, call all the major news networks. I'm going to call you a politician right now? You said, I don't know. But we can have that discussion. Usually, someone just BSs as an answer.
Yeah.
This is my weak attempt, this is my weak attempt at humor. It's good. That's good. That's good. Thank you.
Where are we at?
Uh, I think you could choose any of those.
I think we were done.
The hot seat, getting hot.
It is. Just a couple here.
Four.
All right. With Buffalo growing, but not quite the same rates of like a St. Michael or a Monticello, how does a city like ours become more competitive and attracting enough business and commerce to help satisfy city needs, like operating costs, and move toward building amenities in the want column, community centers? You mentioned trails before.
Yeah, that's a complicated question. Yeah, I was thinking about that today as reading these questions. I guess the hardest part of that is we do have businesses, you know, in the parks there behind the Ryan Chev dealership, you know, got that commercial property. It seems to be that those are expanding, the businesses are having bigger buildings. I do think that we do need to have more commercial property. Otherwise, I mean, we need to have that tax base too, whether we get them in here at a reduced rate, and then eventually, over time, you know, hopefully, yeah, they don't, they don't move out, and we bring that. I kind of touched on that a little bit earlier about Monticello and the surrounding. Some of them are growing faster than us, but I think we have a unique spot that we're, we have the lake, we have trail, we have two good lakes. Buffalo gets kind of dirty in July and August, as we know, it's kind of stinks sometimes, but it's still pretty. I mean, it's half a fence and the walkway. So I think we draw a different group of people. I think the Monticello people, they're more of the fast-paced hustle and bustle, because it's all spread out.
Zip on 94.
Yeah, they have a river, but they don't use it. I mean, they drive across it, but that, there's really nothing along the river. It's houses.
Sure.
Yeah. I don't know if that answered the question, commerce?
I think so.
City needs. It goes along with the utilities I was talking about earlier, about the water and the gas. We need to have that solid. And that's one of the things that I'm running on is that we need to have good core utilities that are reliable, and that is cheap as we can get them. If we don't have that, we can't really expand.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that answers it. So just to recap, it was, you know, concentrate on commercial space, that we need to build that tax base to be more competitive for those, against those specific cities.
Yes, correct.
All right, perfect. This is one I really liked asking is, what is one hard truth or misconception about running a city that the voters should know, and how do you plan to address that?
I just was reviewing my notes.
Perfect.
Feel free.
We didn't even see your folder there.
Yeah, right. Yeah, this is on purpose.
Yeah.
Should've worn my uniform.
Yeah.
Camouflage joke.
Yeah. Gotta love them.
I think a misconception that people have is that we're able to take care of all their need, or their desires. I mean, people desire certain things. I'm more in the, hey, what are our needs for the city of Buffalo, and what are the needs for the residents, more than what they desire, what they would like to see? Let's, let's focus on brass tacks. Okay, what are, what are the needs of the city?
Sure.
Especially with the money spent, where I don't know the exact figure of, you know, how much money we're in the hole, but that'll be a learning curve for me if I'm elected. But that's, that's what I see.
Sure. One, one thing I look at that, and I was, I spoke with another candidate on here, is at some point, and I don't mean to be controversial or anything, at some point, isn't it like the citizens have to kind of realize what you just said is, we're here to provide the needs and the services, not all the wants? Or if you want more information, isn't it the citizens' responsibility to kind of want to get involved, to ask the questions, and actually utilize the resources that the city has, versus going on social media and just saying, I'm not happy, you know? You know, isn't it a responsibility of the citizens to, hey, take, take some ownership of your surrounding and get involved?
Exactly. And there's a lot of people out there in this town that are blessed, and they don't have, I mean, their needs are provided regardless. So they're looking at the more of the desire parts. What would we like to see at my level? Which is fine, but that's not what we should be focused on right now, I don't think, especially with trying to recoup from the golf course and some other spending. I know they have a big project lined up for this Highway 25 reroute downtown here. I don't, I haven't seen a lot of the plans for that, so I don't exactly know what that looks like.
So I'm going to clarify.
And that's more state, right?
Yeah, I'm going to clarify a little bit on that, because it's not just a city plan.
Correct.
That is in conjunction with MnDOT. MnDOT, they, it's a state highway. They're going to decide they want, when they want to do it. So I know it may come at an ill timed, from what I know about asking the questions, is we may have an opportunity, we may not be happy about it, but if we have any input, because MnDOT is going to do it regardless. So again, don't, you know, if you're elected, don't come, you know, you know, crying at Brad here. This is a MnDOT project that we're, we get the opportunity to give some feedback of what would we like to see in the outcome of it, because it's happening.
Yep.
Sure. Just a clarification, everybody.
So, one more question before we get to the real tough questions. But
Got it.
From the city council forum in previous weeks, what do you feel your best answer, or your answer, your favorite question? And what was one you'd like to expand or clarify on?
Well, I don't know if it was my favorite question, but I was the one that asked, had to answer the hemp and CBD question.
Lucky guy.
Sure.
And I was pretty black and white, and I'm still going to be black and white, just because being in the military, that's, it's zero tolerance. You get caught, we've had people that have gone through popping positive for urine analysis, and then they have to go through this whole process of trying to prove that it actually wasn't something, it was an energy drink. So you get, you can pop positive for something, an energy drink. Well, to me, I'm, I'm not for it. And everything that they design and they send out, I mean, it's in gummy bears. And I was just looking at stuff online today. It's colorful, it's bright, it's not geared for me.
Right.
It's geared for people that are younger, and I have a problem with that. That was one of the questions I don't want to elaborate more on.
And I'm going to try and recap from what I remember of it. It was with the state legislation passing the THC and the marijuana bill, they snuck it in, and it came down to legalize a certain portion of it. It was, what is the city council's responsibility, or the mayor's responsibility to work with local law enforcement? How are they going to enforce the state law that just changed? Keeping in mind that it hasn't changed federally. I think that was a recap of what the question you're referring to.
Correct.
So it was, yeah, you're working, working with local residents, but you're just, no.
Yep.
So, okay. I'd just like to provide the context of what
So people can hear.
Yeah, if they didn't hear what the question was.
Sure.
So.
All right.
All right, the speed round. This is a really hard hit.
Get ready.
Here. I don't remember if I sent you the speed round questions?
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay. So you had some time to think about it.
All right. I didn't really, because I figured, I'll just answer those.
Yeah.
What's your favorite food?
Pizza.
What kind of pizza?
Well, two. I like pepperoni and sausage, and then garbage, everything on it. No sauerkraut. I think I guys like sauerkraut, but hate it.
I like sauerkraut a lot.
Sorry, but I like it.
I like it on the bratwurst.
Yes.
Not on a pizza.
Very little. Yeah, not a lot.
Good enough.
I'm not a cabbage guy. When I was active duty, I was in Korea for a year, in kimchi.
Kimchi, yeah.
Oh, you smell it, it's, it's all over, burnt me out.
That's everything, yeah.
No thanks.
Sure.
What's your favorite hobby?
I'd have to say snowmobiling slash UTV and side-by-side stuff.
Sure.
We do that as a family.
Very good. All-expense-paid trip to anywhere, where would you go?
Can I answer that with two?
Sure.
So a Norwegian cruise with me and my wife, or a week-long paid trip, snowmobiling in Wyoming or Utah.
Very fun.
Cool.
That would be mine.
Sure. But the wife first, wife trip first, if that didn't, if that couldn't work out.
She'll go with on the snowmobile.
Okay, okay.
Very cool.
We do everything.
All right.
Very fun.
Um, here's a camera right here.
Where do you want him to look, Luke? All right.
Yep.
Any last message for the voters?
Uh, yeah, November 8 is voting time. Get out there, everybody, vote. And if you're looking for leadership that'll listen to you and respond, I'm your man. So vote Bradley Doll for Buffalo City Council November 8.
Brad, thank you for coming in. It's been enjoyable for the Buffalo Community Podcast.
I learned about this, because I never knew that you guys had a podcast.
Well, geez, now you know.
Yep.
You got about 120 episodes to get caught up on.
And knowing is half the battle.
Yep. All of them are award-winning, like amazing episodes.
Oh, spread the word. That's cool. I mean, I just, I never knew that it even existed.
Cool.
We enjoy it.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, we're here with Jameson Wakefield. Thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it, and good luck. But why don't you take a second to introduce yourself, and your camera's right up there?
All right. Well, first of all, thanks for doing this, because there's, in these kind of races, there's not a lot of opportunity to get out in mediums like this. So you got the forum, you got this, you got social media, Facebook. My name is Jameson Wakefield. My wife stationed, I moved here back in two, end of 2004. In fact, next week, it'll be 18 years officially, which means I've lived here longer than anywhere else. And we raised our three boys here. I got two graduates from Buffalo High School down at Iowa State in the engineering program, and one that's going to graduate next spring. He is bound for the Army. So, and I've been active in the community with three boys, coaching, Cub Scouts, church, you name it. So I've been fortunate enough to, I've been on the city planning commission now for seven years. And that has been a learning experience. And now the last nine months on the city council, too, and putting all of that together with all of the focus groups, input groups with the citizens and everything. It's, it's been a good adventure.
Very fun. Well, thank you very, very much. And to coin a phrase, now that you've been here longer than anywhere else, is welcome home.
There you go.
The city public can use that if they want.
I like it.
So we're just, just jump right off is, what is one thing that the city's doing very well? And what is one thing that they need to improve upon?
I think one of the things that the city is doing well is they have a plan for city street maintenance updates. That's important, because if you're just trying to stay on top of stuff, rather than having a systematic approach to it, it's, it's a difficult thing to try and budget for. And I think in the forum the other night, we were talking about bonding, and I had mentioned, you know, one of the things we have, we're not in a bad place, but we're probably maybe a little higher than average for a city of our size. So it's important for us to think about how can we plan how we're spending money. And we're seeing things now with the budget, where they want to put things like the Civic Arena on its own levy, so that you can track it. As an economics book that I read years ago once said, if you don't own the money, you don't mind the money. So it's, it's an important thing. So that's one of the things, and I think a side note to that, and this is, the city does a really good job of promoting itself. I work in downtown Minneapolis, and I'm sometimes astounded at the number of people that I run into who, hey, there's something going on in Buffalo this weekend, what is it? And I'll throw it out there, and it's, whether it's a car show, or downtown arts, or whatever. So, yeah.
Very good. Awesome. What would you say is one hard truth or misconception about running a city that voters should know? And how would you plan to address that?
You know, I think one of the, one of the biggest misconceptions that people have, and this is from a few years of campaigning, I called it door knocking the other night at the forum, and apparently, that just sounds creepy. So, so when I say door knocking, it just means I'm going door-to-door campaigning, saying hi to everybody. So don't worry. But it's oftentimes, and this is in previous years, is why doesn't the city council put a grocery store downtown? And I say it in a nice way, but the city isn't in the grocery business. We can't dictate. And I think a lot of people think the city council can dictate certain things. And we're really, you know, we're a decision-making body, but if somebody wants to put a business in, and that business fits in the zone, you know, the zoning that is for that area and everything, we don't really have a say in it. That's, that's a business decision. That's, you know, the city licensing and zoning and permitting. But yeah, so I think citizens should understand that we are, we're not a complete decision-making body, unless there, you know, obviously, budget questions or things like that. So that was one that really stood out to me.
So like, for an example, it would be, someone wants to do something. You, as a council, just to clarify for all 250,000 of our viewers here, is you look, okay, this is what you want to do, and that checks a box, checks a box, checks a box. You don't meet this one. We can't do that. Or we need to discuss more how you could fit into this box. Is that, would that be an accurate illustration?
Yeah, if you think about from the planning and zoning, if somebody comes in and they want to put in, let's say it's an apartment building, and it's a place that is zoned, it's, it's zoned multifamily, but it might not be zoned for that type of multifamily. You then do like a planned unit development type of thing, where there are rules around it. It's not just a free-for-all. And the city has to make some decisions on what they'll allow there. But it, it's still, there's rules in the game. You can't just let, you could, but it would be a bad decision-making policy. So.
Sure, not SimCity.
Exactly.
Okay. Speaking of that, is, so making those rules, we have a large government center that is now vacant downtown Buffalo. What's your, what specifically is your vision for that space? And then ideally, what would you like to see there? Now, I clarify this for every single candidate that came in. Those are two very different questions. One is more like the, this is a, this is the reasonable expectation of it, of this is like what the smart money would do. And then this is like, yeah, I would love to see this here.
That's, you know, those are good questions. They're not as different, well, at least for me, they're not as different as you might think. So I'm on the, I'm on the EDA Advisory Board with the city county. And we've been working through those exact questions. So what would I like to see there? I would really like to see some mixed use that has a blend from, you know, one of the oldest neighborhoods in Buffalo, that naturally blends into the downtown. So that means a mixed use of residential and retail. It means a mixed use of maybe multifamily, but lower density, moving into higher density, and tying it into the waterfront on the lake. And that, that's the part that makes that piece of property so unique, is it is an opportunity for us, not only to expand downtown residential, but tie in more commerce, and tie it all into the lakefront, so that you have a very walkable downtown that's inviting to people. I think that would be great.
Sure. It kind of, one follow-up question to that is, and I can't believe we haven't come up with this in the other interviews, is the fact that just the city of Buffalo can't do anything with it, because it's a county building, sitting on a state highway, off of a county road inside city limits.
Yep.
So you have a lot of cooks in the kitchen there.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Well, and I can't take credit for this one, but it's, it, it kind of sums it up well. You're going to the dance, and you got to dance with your cousin.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I know, I won't take credit for it, but I will use it. But there's, yeah, all of that comes into play. So everybody asks, what's the city going to do with that? And it's like, we get to make So everybody asks, what's the city going to do with that? And it's like, uh, we get to make some decisions. But ultimately it's the county property.
Yeah.
Once they, but here's the thing is developers are not going to try and chew that big a piece of meat. Unless they know what they can do with it. So that's where it, it's, it's that symbiotic thing that we have to work with the county, the county has to agree that this is what we're looking for. And, and right now, I think we're on pretty much the same page as, you know, some type of multi-use development, but yeah, it's a tough one. And it's, and the thing is for developers, that is a very, very big piece of property in a very, very important spot within a city. So it's, it's bigger than a lot of, of developers want to take on in one swallow.
Sure. Got it. Uh, building off that a little bit, but, uh, so with Buffalo growing and maybe not at the same rate as our I ninety-four, Monticello, St. Michael neighbors, how do we, you know, how do we remain competitive in attracting uh, businesses, commerce to Buffalo, you know, to help satisfy some of those operating costs, but then also building towards uh, some of those amenities, some of those want items that we might want here, like a community center or something of that nature.
Yeah. And that was one of the questions at the forum the other night too. And, and I think those two are linked. For one, we don't, I mean, we've got some industrial parks, but the space that's in them right now is a little spotty. I mean, you, if you look at that corridor going from St. Michael to ninety-four along there and the size of the, the businesses that have cropped up, you need some, you need some space. And we don't have that to offer. What we need is to find a space in Buffalo, around Buffalo that we can turn into an industrial park where, where businesses like that can build and have the area that they need. Um, the, the biggest challenge, me personally, that I thi- think the city of Buffalo has is that unlike St. Michael that built a corridor to ninety-four, we have a corridor on Highway twenty-five through Monticello, or you go all the way down to, uh, Highway twelve. That is something that in the longer term there now, you, you know, we talked about all the players with the county site. Well, now we get to bring the state into the thing because we got to figure out what we can get the state to do with, um, Highway twenty-five.
Sure.
Yeah. And I think the second part, I'll just jump in real quick. The second part of that is being able to do that and bring in those kinds of businesses and that kind of tax revenue and, and workers and that's where I said it, I think this way in the forum is that's where you get the nice to haves, the quality of life things. Because you truly need that kind of tax base. You can't build a, a robust community center, community pool or something on the backs of homeowners.
Yep. I'm, I want to point one thing out, um, that you did say in that forum is everybody kind of says, oh, Monticello has it. You immediately said, Monticello also has a nuclear power plant. And I thought that was a really great point to, to go out there just for some clarification of, of people of yeah, just kind of paying attention to how a city works. And I'll be one of the first ones that I don't even know.
Well, and it's fair too, because I don't think people equate everything from a tax base standpoint. They don't equate everything in, in the picture and
Population.
Population. And honestly, Monticello has a lot of manufacturing and stuff. If you go up there, there's, uh, if you go down like Chelsea or, um, what's the other one at school? There's, there's a lot of manufacturing. Polaris has a very big plant up there. That's the kind of thing that you add to your tax base and it's, it's big. I mean, but yes, the nuclear power plant is, yeah.
Right.
It's the white elephant. So.
Sure. Uh, alright, um, this came from, uh, all of these derived from the public because we asked for their input. Is, uh, this gentleman, he had moved out to Buffalo after college and was briefly in one of the apartment buildings before buying a house. Do you think there's more demand for multifamily zoning? Uh, so our growing city has more housing diversity?
Yeah. So the, this is a, this is another common question and it's an interesting question too. So in the down or the community planning, uh, focus group that we've been doing now most of this year. Uh, the, one of the first things that, uh, Mike Lamb did, he's a consultant, is he gave us a breakdown of housing in Buffalo. And it's, it's interesting that Buffalo has a very good range of housing from apartments through townhome, blah, blah, blah. But here's the thing that has changed, I think, over the last call it five or six years, is that there's no such thing, it, once again, my opinion, there's no such thing as an entry level house. So we have, we have a, a developer who's looking at putting in, uh, an eighty somehow home development. These are not seventy-five foot lots, these are sixty-five foot lots. These are tuck unders and everything, fine homes and everything. And that, and he, he referenced it as a, a um, entry level development. I said, well, how much are you thinking that the market price on these will be? And he said, four hundred thousand dollars. And I said, yeah, it was, that was more than I paid for our step up house
Yeah.
eighteen years ago. So, so that's, I think the reality where, um, larger multifamily like by Coburns, that is slowly filling that void. The other thing it does is it creates a flow, you know, um, Havenwood, some of the new apartments that are coming in. They create a place for people who are moving out of their homes to move in. So that people that are in those can move into those homes. And that's how you start creating more affordable housing. It's, it's convoluted, but it's economics, it's supply and demand.
You have more to think on that there, Mark?
Yeah, that was awesome. I liked it.
Great. What do we got left here? A couple more questions here for you. So, um, from the council forum in the previous weeks, what do you feel, uh, your favorite question was, your favorite answer? And then what was one maybe you would want to expand on or clarify?
So I think my favorite question is where do you live and how did you end up moving to Buffalo where you live? Cause the story I told was about us driving from Champlin to Litchfield where we grew up and my wife looking up there and going, that'd be a great place to build a home. And then we did. Almost literally where she was looking. That, that's not a fairy tale. That's literally. And so I thought that was my favorite. I think probably the best was really when they asked, what are your qualifications? Now I've been fortunate, I, I got put on the planning commission many years ago. I really embraced it. They put me in all kinds of um, citizen and, and, uh, input and focus groups and everything, which was a great learning experience. And of course, this year, filling in the last year of Eric Anderson's term, I get to take all of that and actually sit in that chair during the council meetings, during the workshops, sit with staff, uh, you know, that I think is an experience that it just kind of brings it all together. So the, the one maybe that I would expound on, I think it would be the canniboid question because I don't think people really understand what's going on with that. That bill, once ag- once again, that bill lacked a lot of detail. So it, yeah, you always like that, you know? So here you go, municipality.
Read it so you know what's.
Yeah. Oh, by the way, there's a rule in there too that you have to enforce. But so it's not like we get a choice per se. It's that we have to try and take what we're given and deal with it.
Sure.
And so, and I, I have to give Chief Bucky a, a huge applaud here because we sat in that meeting with staff and we're kind of trying to figure it all out zoning wise and, and then what licensing rules and, you know, with licensing rules comes penalties and you try and figure all that out. And Chief Bucky is, I think he was looking at it from the practical manner saying, you know, the closer it looks like something we already have, probably the easier it is for us to enforce it. And I, I just, I like that because we could have made it incredibly complicated.
Sure.
For no reason whatsoever.
Yeah. Um, I want to expand on that because some people might not know the question that you're answer, answering or expanding on. And forget, I'm going to try and get it here. It was with that new rule with cannabis and THC, with it being legal in Minnesota.
Yep.
What are you guys doing? Are you for it or against it as far as making a rule of how are we going to deal with it in Buffalo?
I don't.
Was, was that the question?
It was, it was, um, it doesn't even really, if you're for it or against it, you gotta deal with it.
Yeah.
You know, and the thing about, that makes this unique is that everybody, I, well, not everybody, but people have an image in their head that it's going to be these shops, you know, kind of like the, the tobacco shops. It's going to be like Denver or whatever. And that's, that's the weird part about this law is that's not what it is. It is literally, as long as they're not available without, uh, um, a clerk in the transaction. So they're going to be locked up. It's kind of like cigarettes. They're going to be locked up.
Sure.
But yeah, I can go in and get a energy drink that's, you know, got THC.
Sure.
I just have to be twenty-one, show my ID and, but they have to unlock it and give it to me.
Yeah.
But I could do that a quick trip. I could, it's not like it's a special spot. That's what makes it so tough for the, the police department to enforce. You have to be twenty-one plus. They have to do their checks. If they don't know where these places are and there's a licensing in, in place to identify that, how do they do that? And so that's the difficult part and that's what was lacking in the bill.
Sure.
So Buffalo has done what a lot of the local municipalities have done. They put a temporary moratorium on it until we can figure it out. Because if we don't figure it out, you can pretty much do whatever you want because it's legal.
Sure. Um, I can't believe it's taken this long to get to our last question. Was the, um, what's your plan to address the cost of utilities? Can they be brought down and how?
Yeah, um, big shout out to Jason Musburger. He's, he's been great with this. Um, here's the challenge that we face and I don't care if you're on Buffalo Utilities or if you're on Wright Hennepin Utilities. Here's a challenge you face is that this state has mandated a phased in approach to twenty-five, fifty and at some point a hundred percent renewables. And, uh, that's okay. And, uh, so you're, the, these power companies are locked in, you know, and there's, but the thing is that once you start shutting down coal plants.
I'm thinking the joke earlier. I'm so sorry. Keep going.
No, that's fine. That's why I love this format. Um, so, so they, they're locked in and, and, and you phase out coal plants and you don't allow for more nuke. And what you're left with is natural gas. Or, well, I shouldn't say just that because actually the Minnesota Municipal Power Association where we, the city of Buffalo gets its power from actually has a couple of plants that are methane.
Yeah.
You can go with that wherever you want. So, but they, um, but the, the gas prices are going through the roof.
Yeah.
And so I think ultimately the questions that I've asked, um,
We gotta, we gotta re-record. This isn't fair.
Yeah, no, no, keep going.
Okay. I'll tell you the joke later.
Okay. If you can't share it on the podcast, I know it's a good one. Um, so yeah, where, where this is stuck at is that, um, you're beholden to natural gas, natural gas prices go up. And there's this thing in Europe that's going on, apparently some folks are mad at each other and they're, you know, and they're shutting stuff off and, and winter's coming. And so I posed that question to MMPA. And I said, what happens in December when it's twenty degrees in Berlin? And they got a rolling blackout because they can't heat homes and they can't. We're in a bidding war.
Yeah.
So their answer was, well, that's already been factored in. I'm in the financial industry. I understand that you can factor in a lot of stuff, but when demand drives the price up, the price goes up. So
Yeah.
I have, I'm very skeptical. Um, Jason and I have talked about that. I, I, I believe Steve Downer is kind of in that same camp too. The, because when you get into the winter, yes, the wind still blows and the turbines still spin, but your solar panels, even if they're not buried in snow, they're twenty percent less efficient than, actually they're about twenty percent efficient compared to what they are during warmer weather.
Sure.
So it's, that's where I get worried. Um, it is really just, it's a bigger question. What do you do about it? You start asking hard questions to your energy supplier and go, why are you not pushing harder on this?
Sure. Apologies for there again. The joke is worth it. I'll tell you after, after this. So, but let's, thank you for the answer. Good job. That's unprofessional on both of our parts. So.
Are you kidding? It's a podcast.
Yeah. Uh, the speed round, these are the real tough hitting questions.
Okay.
It's, what, what's your favorite food?
I tell you, on any given day, you get me some good barbecue.
Excellent. Where's your favorite barbecue place?
I gotta say right now, it is probably the ribs at, um, Big Boar or the brisket at Mill Creek.
Yeah. I'm hungry now. Yep. Uh, favorite hobby?
Used to be motorcycling. Um, might be again someday. If you guys want to buy an MG, I got one for sale. Favorite hobby right now? Well, this time of year, my, my dog is at home. He's mad at me, but pheasant hunting.
Sure. If you had an all expense paid trip to anywhere in the world, where would you go?
Two part, two part answer to that one. By myself or with a select group of people? I would go back to the Philippines and track, track my dad's path during World War Two. That is an ultimate goal of mine. That's one of my bucket lists. Um, but really if, if, if my bride was in the, the mix of the whole thing, I believe we would do a tour of Europe.
Cool, cool. And to close thing out, uh, again, your camera's up there. Give any last messages you want for the voters and we'll wrap it up.
Yeah, I'll just say this, you've got choices. There's two seats open. There's five people running. You've got three people that are really running. I don't, I'm not going to put any, you know, onus on anybody, but you have three people that's really running. Good people, um, Brad and Brian, I, I've known Brian quite a few years actually. I, Brad's a great guy. I just want to put this out there. Come January, the person that sits in that seat on that first Monday has to be able to do the job. They don't have time with some of the things that are facing the, the city right now to ramp up into the job. So one of those people should be somebody that's got some experience and I've got experience. I've rattled it off through the questions and everything. So I won't expound on it. But I really think it's important because it's tough. It is drinking from a fire hose. When you start going through just learning staff and their roles and going through a budget, our last agenda for Monday night's council meeting was two hundred and nine pages.
Uh, what?
Yeah, yep. And, and you know what? We tried to slog through it, but it's two hundred and nine pages and a big part of it was like third quarter audit, uh, um, budget. So yeah, it's, it's a lot. And I've made the joke about, um, planning commission. And when I got on there, the first thing they were doing was they're updating all the zoning ordinance. And I, first of all, didn't even know where to find them. So good luck.
Yeah.
But you know, it's, and I shout out to Steve Gritman, he's great at this. Um, he walked us through it. But I did have a crash course in what all of the different zoning, uh, uh, zoning things are things. And that's important because you know, if you don't know you know, what a single family or a multifamily, and then the variations in multifamily or the business, whether it's highway business or, you know, that gets really complicated and it takes a long time because it's, it's more than a couple pages. So.
Sure. Better you than me. Yeah. Yeah. Well, Jameson, thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it. Um, we usually have a sign off, but we don't know which order you're in. So good luck. And thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks for doing this again.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Next up, we've got Brian Van Toff and he's going to take a little second to introduce himself for city council.
Sure. Uh, my name is Brian Van Toff. I have, uh, my, my wife and I, Erica, moved back to Buffalo in two thousand seventeen. Um, our two kids, we lived here from two thousand two, uh, to two thousand ten as well. Uh, we moved to Plymouth because our kids went to, um, uh, school and actually Maple Grove at a private school in Maple Grove. Uh, we moved back here because we wanted to get out of the cities, uh, one and two, um, to live on a beautiful, uh, live on a lake. We, as, uh, um, in the job that I am in, it's very difficult to take, uh, weekends off. So it's, you know, you either find a place to live on a lake because you're not going to buy a cabin and, and go visit that cabin anytime soon on a weekend. So, um, we moved back here in twenty seventeen. We wanted to get out of the twin cities, get out of the, kind of the rat race that is Hennepin County. Uh, moved to a, a family friendly community like Buffalo where our kids were born and mostly raised. Um, and just, uh, um, really just to come to a community where they could graduate with a reasonably sized class. Cause we debated, it's debated sending them to Wayzata, which has sixteen hundred kids or nineteen hundred kids or whatever it is per class. And even Buffalo at five hundred kids a class is, is still fairly, fairly high. I mean, my, my son said to me the other day, you know, I saw this person and, and I know this person's been in his class since sixth grade here in Buffalo.
Yeah.
I just saw her for the first time this year and he's a senior. So really, I, I know COVID kind of, you know, kicked that out a little bit, but, uh,
But it is October.
It is October, five years. It is October. Five years later. So, um, you know, it, it's a, it's a, it's a big enough community where you get a, a lot of different opportunities in Buffalo. Uh, but it's also small enough where you should be able to know kind of the vast majority of your, every classmates.
Sure.
So yeah, we, we moved here in 2017 and just, uh, have, have really enjoyed it since.
Well, to coin a phrase that the city of Buffalo can use is welcome home.
Yes.
Let's jump, let's jump right into it. Uh, what is one thing that the city's doing very well? And what is one thing that they need to improve upon?
Yeah. I mean, the, the one thing that I think they need to improve upon is I think just the communication on, on the utility bills to, to under, to let residents understand why they, they, their bills are as high as they are. Whether or not they are as high as, you know, whether they are high compared to what other communities are. Um, I don't know really what other communities are necessarily charging. I know in the part of the city that I'm in is still Wright Hennepin. So we are a little bit different than, than getting billed by the city. Um, I, I think residents are just like, why are my utility bills so high? And I just don't think the residents understand that there's, we're actually kind of still paying for some of that infrastructure through some of the bonding that we've done in the past. And, um, unfortunately nothing is free and everything, everything is getting more expensive nowadays. So I, I think maybe the city could do a better job in just explaining some of that, those details to, to its residents. Um, and then what the city is doing great, I think the, I think the city staff is very open, very transparent. I, I, I believe they're very friendly. Uh, I think Lorene does a good job of, of managing, um, the people in the office there. I think the police department is, is fantastic. Uh, I think every police officer I've had the, uh, fortunate, uh, instance to meet has been incredibly friendly. I've only been pulled over once.
I was like, are you a speeder?
Yeah, no, just once. And I think it was because I didn't stop at a, a stoplight for a, for a full second, but, um, I just think, I just think as a community, um, the community, the, the people who are working and running the community are, have just, are just really top notch people. So I, I think that's probably the, the best thing that I can say about the city is the people that run it have been fantastic.
Sure.
Cool.
Sure.
I'm going to jump to question seven.
Yep.
Just because you touched on it and I'm going to read the question just as it's written. It's not that I wasn't listening to your answer. I just prefer to keep things the same, right? So what is your plan to address the cost of utilities? Can they be brought down and how?
Yeah. So I talked a little bit to, um, uh, the, the gentleman at the city who actually kind of handles the utilities and the nice thing about that is, as I mentioned at the, at the forum last week, Tuesday, if I were to compare my utility bill with Wright Hennepin to the Buffalo utility bill from an electricity standpoint, I would have been maybe $2 separated between the Buffalo, uh, bill and the, um, and the Wright Hennepin bill. And, and what I think the biggest thing that comes into play, um, with the two differences is, is the kilowatt hours that, uh, that, that, that there's, that's the biggest difference. I think Buffalo is like 12 cents per kilowatt hour. Wright Hennepin is 10. However, Wright Hennepin, Wright Hennepin's basic charge is $20 a month, whereas the city of Buffalo's, um, basic charge is $9 a month. So if they could adjust that basic charge a little bit to change, to be more in line with right, with, with what Wright Hennepin does, that they could pull down those kilowatt hour charges. Um, that could actually, uh, for people who are trying to be very efficient with their electricity, uh, they certainly could potentially bring their utility bills down. Um, another thing that I would suggest for city residents and whether we caught, whether we as a city contract with somebody in the future or not, uh, with this type of service is if you're having problems with your energy bill, get an energy audit done on your home. Whether it's somebody that the city sends out or whether you're contacting an, an energy auditor on your own. But there's just a lot of things you can do in your own home to reduce the amount of energy, uh, that you consume, whether it's adding insulation to your attic, whether you consider upgrading your appliances. You might have a shorter payback period on upgrading a refrigerator or something else that uses a lot of juice. Uh, but those are some things that I would suggest from, from a city standpoint on, on kind of helping people, uh, to reduce those utility bills. Um, because that's tough. I mean, that's, that's, that can be a big chunk of your monthly debt, monthly payments. Uh, when you're talking utility electric bills that, that you don't know how you're spending $300 a month. And you know, you blame the city because you don't know.
You gotta blame somebody.
You gotta blame somebody and the city is the prime candidate. So that's fine.
I didn't know that about, uh, I'm going to jump on to the Wright Hennepin, city of Buffalo. So when you start hearing that and people might be hearing like, well, why is my neighbor getting a better rate? They might not understand that there's still sections inside city limits that are Wright Hennepin only and some that fall under the utility, municipal utility.
Correct. And I think the goal for the entire city is that everybody inside city limits will eventually be, uh, city electric. I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I've always been, I've, I've had two houses in, in Buffalo and they've both been Wright Hennepin. Um, but again, because the basic charge is higher with Wright Hennepin, they're able to charge a little bit lower kilowatt hour rateage or rate. And, and basically still make about the same amount of money. So if you have a lower basic charge and higher consumption, it's going to be higher bill. So that's just, it's, it's just kind of the way it is unfortunately.
All right. Uh, well, let's, uh, one that I like to be, like, I like asking these candidates is, um, we've got a beautiful government center all north of town.
Yes.
But we have a really ugly one downtown Buffalo.
Yes.
What is your, what is specifically is your vision? And ideally, what would you like to see there?
Yeah.
And I like to clarify this because I say, well, in a grand world, what would be the coolest thing? You'd like to see it. You'd love it. And we know that might not be feasible, um, for that.
Not in the immediate future.
Right. And then what do you think the actual vision of it should be in the reasonable?
Yep.
Future.
So my ideal vision of, of the government center is kind of multi-pronged a little bit. Um, I think it should not only include the government center, but this might be, this might not be something that people are going to like. I think the library should be moved as well. So I think that entire section.
I can't get too excited about that because I can't vote in this, but I a hundred percent agree with you there.
Okay. So I think, I think that whole section, the, the county owns the library parking lot. The city owns the library itself. I think where the library is does not serve enough of our community because if you moved it to the east side of Highway 25, you'd be a lot closer to more people who would be, who, who don't want to cross Highway 25 and a busy road to go, to go to use the library. I, I think, I think our seniors would get more use out of the library if it was on the east side of 25, still downtown. Whether that means the old theater area or, or wherever it might be. But I would like to see the library included on that kind of that redevelopment as well. Now, as far as that, if I add that and talk about the entire government center site, I foresee a, a property that has multiple uses all at one time. So we went out to, as an example, um, we went out to Lola's in Waconia, uh, this past weekend to go out for dinner. And I've talked to other people in Buffalo who said, you know, I, I wish we had something like a, a medium to high end restaurant that would be in town. Um, so I, I would love to see in combination with the library and the government center put together and maybe even the, the road there kind of reverted back to the, the north side of where the government center is. So that it kind of cuts, cuts behind it and goes down so as not to take up, you know, a lot of potentially valuable real estate. Uh, the ideal world for me is that would be, it could be a multi-use area where we could have a nice lake view restaurant that you can go and, and sit and, and have a nice meal and overlook Buffalo Lake, which maybe will be clean in five to 10 years with the zebra mussels now that it would be, you can open the garage doors and, and, and have a nice meal out on the deck, um, in August on, on Buffalo Lake. But then you could, what I also foresee, what I'd like to see, um, is something that you could even potentially even repurpose the office building that's, the office section of the old government center that's there that could maybe to bring some jobs back downtown where people could, you know, then they could actually go downtown and, and, and spend some money at the restaurants that are downtown. I'd like to see at least maybe that part of the building get repurposed for an office complex or something. And I, I think there's opportunities to bring businesses in town that could use an office building of that size that we could bring those jobs back downtown a little bit to, to, to kind of replace the hundreds of employees that left with the community center. And then another thing I'd like to see myself personally is as, as realtors, we, we kind of like to see different types of, of housing. I would like to potentially see like a small townhouse cluster development that has half of them overlooking Buffalo Lake. And if the city or the DNR would allow it, maybe even having that development have like a community dock system, which would increase the value of those properties. It would be, I think you could get four or $500,000 townhouses out of there i- if you could find something, um, in that type of, you have those types of townhouses there and give lake access to a nice lake, like a big lake like Buffalo. Um, and you could also have, it, it just depends on how much, how economically you can use that lake, but, uh, you know, the restaurant, the, the, the townhouses, the, the office complex. Um, right now, you know, previously the, the, anybody who happened to have the unfortunate, um, whether they were unfortunately end up in jail, had one of the nicest views in town. So, um, you know, I'd love to be able to. Prime, yes, it does. In Buffalo, it does. The crime pays. Oh, we get to go from Hennepin County to Wright County. Um, but yes. Um, so I, you know, I, I think those are three uses. Um, I'd love to see, I'd love to see that office complex. I'd love to see some townhouses. I know there's a lot of talk about, I know people would love to see a community center there. Um, I, I don't know that that's the prime location for a community center. Again, that goes back to if we're talking about a community center for that, that's going to have a big impact on our senior population. That again, to me belongs on the east side of Highway 25. That's going to be closer to where those, where those people are. Um, and I think if you're a family looking for a community center, it doesn't even necessarily have to be downtown. So, um, I, I think, uh, that site, that would probably take up the vast majority of that site, um, and just, uh, be a really nice usage that would add a lot of nice tax base and a lot of, there, I, I'm trying to think of one other thing that we could add to that government site that would kind of be a centerpiece of Buffalo that people would just say, cool, we have this.
Chipotle.
Chipotle, absolutely.
There you go.
Not to put words in your mouth.
With the roundabout, oh, we have the roundabouts.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, let's see here. Sorry, I got wrapped up in your answer there and now I'm trying to figure out what we've got to ask. Go for it Tyler. If you got one picked out.
All right. So, um, with Buffalo growing, but not quite as fast as St. Michael, Albertville, Monticello.
Yep.
How does Buffalo compete with that? Towards building that base to provide our needs, but maybe move more towards that want column.
Yep.
The community center, the parks and trails, all those really nice things that we all want, but currently don't have.
Yep. Um, based on kind of what you just said there, I mean, the biggest thing would be is if we ever would see Highway 55 expanded to four lanes out here. I don't think it's going to happen in my lifetime. So I'm not holding my breath by any means, uh, with that. Um, but what I would love to see as a city is we kind of take an inventory of, of what our talent really is in the city. I know we're got, we got 16,000 whatever residents in, in Buffalo. But have we really dialed down to what, what our demographics are as far as what our, what our talents are in our community? Do we have college degrees? Do we, um, you know, do we, whatever, whatever our talents are in this community? We need to be able to show somebody who's sick of the garbage and sick of the BS in Hennepin County and the, in the west metro, who's going to want to come out here and maybe, maybe open, um, a factory, not a factory, but something, maybe we expand our industrial parks. Or maybe we have that office complex downs, downtown in that old, in the part of the old government center. But I, I, I just think that we as a city could do a better job of, of saying, here's who we are. Here's who lives in the city. Here's who doesn't want to commute anymore. And, and, and here's, here's our, here's what you can bring to this. I mean, if you can have Roseau have as many businesses as they have up in, on the border of Canada. Um, what is it? Uh, Digiky or something is up there? I mean, they, that's, that's a tech company and they're out, they're up in northern Minnesota.
Marvin Windows. I mean, those are giant companies.
They are. So I mean, we should be able to, if we can promote who we are, what we're good at, I think we should be able to eventually attract a business or businesses that will come to this community, invest in some commercial, invest in some, uh, invest, invest in, um, an office complex or something like that, where we can get, keep those businesses, keep those people here in town as opposed to shipping everybody to the Twin Cities or just sitting in their basement at, at their home office.
Sure. Great. Question from a listener here saying, I moved out to Buffalo after college and was briefly in one of the apartment buildings before buying a house in Buffalo. Do you think there's more demand for multifamily zoning? So our growing city has more housing diversity.
Yeah. I, I believe there might be some room for multifamily. However, I, I, my perspective on it is if we're going to do this as a city, I would rather see four single family homes or townhouses compared to one apartment unit or one, uh, one, one multifamily unit. And the reason that I say that is just, just because I like to see, we can spread out as a community where, where, where I, I think we want to grow as a, as a, as a place where people want to raise their kids and, and kids need some elbow room. So I, I just feel if we're going to grow our, if we're going to grow our people base, um, and grow our, let's say, or even our average sale price of our homes and, and grow our tax base, I, I personally think we just, we need to expand the, the, the single family product. Well, again, whether that's townhouses or whether that's single family homes, um, I would just like to see 80% of that and, and maybe add 20% of, of the apartments. I, I just feel like we have a lot of that. Um, we have a lot of apartments downtown. We've got sporadic apartment buildings all over Buffalo. Um, I, I just feel like there's maybe there's some better options. Whether or not we even expand our housing to kind of the northwest side near where the government center is, where maybe some of those people would want to live close to work. Maybe they want to be able to see where, see, see where they work every day. But
Sure.
Um, I, I think there's more opportunities to expand our community horizontally as compared to vertically.
All right. What is one hard truth or misconception about running a city that voters should know about? And what do you plan to address that? Or how do you plan to address that?
Yeah. I, I feel like residents think we're trying, I, I, this, this would be the first city council I've ever been on. So I look back at my own experiences, uh, with this. But it feels like the public thinks it's an adversarial relationship that, that we're working against them for some reason. Um, but it's, I, I think what people need to understand is we're here to help 16,000 people. We're not specifically targeting any one particular individual or group. Uh, even though it may feel like it because we're all, you know, we all have, we all want to feel how we want to feel and maybe doesn't necessarily as concentrated on, on, on the community, community aspect of everything. Um, and I would say also that we as, we as hope to be, uh, city council members or mayors, um, we aren't doing this for our own personal benefit. We, we do want to give back and provide something to the city and offer, you know, one thing that I keep, I look at myself in the mirror every day and I'm getting older. And so, you know, at 48 years old, you're like, well, I think I've learned a lot in 48 years. Maybe it's time to actually give something back and, 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 and provide some sort of feedback on the years of experience and, and be somebody who can be looked at as an example as opposed to just keeping on taking and taking. So I, I, I think that is also a misconception is that we're here, uh, to somehow stick it to everybody. Um, there's not, there's not an unlimited pool of money when it comes to the city. Um, even though some people would like to think that, um, we would all love to have a community center tomorrow, but with the economics of things, uh, there's just going to be a long time here before really much gets done anywhere. Um, so just as, as, as the public should want, you know, I, I think they just have to understand, we're just, we're here to, we're here to do our job and move this city forward. But then also have a little patience for us, with us, because it's not something that's going to happen overnight in the current economic environment we're in.
I kind of want to add something and it's not a great piggyback to it, but it was something I'd said already with all the other candidates is, um, when I hear these, uh, questions being asked and answered and people are always talking about, um, transparency. Isn't it kind of the responsibility of the citizen to be involved as well instead of just the council and the mayor to be all omnipotent and just say, here, understand. You know, here's information, but you also have to be interested in learning about it as well on how it works. Is there some responsibility there for citizens?
A hundred percent. I, I, I think, uh, you have to be, you have to be engaged. You have to be, if you have a complaint about your property taxes, understand where that money is going. It isn't all going to the city. It's going to the school district. It's going to the county. It's going to the HRA. You pay attention, try to understand where, if you are a homeowner and you're paying those, those, those property taxes, where those are going. Be an involved citizen, you know, watch the city council meetings or at least fast forward through the parts that you're not bored by. Okay. But, uh, um, I mean, just, you, you do have to participate. Check out the, check out the city's website for stuff. I mean, I was not, you, being my, my kids are a little bit older, we don't, we don't go to a lot of the parks. I did not know how many parks the city of Buffalo had, whether it's bike parks or, um, just parks in general. I mean, we, check out the city website and just see what events are going on, uh, see what the parks are. Um, there's a lot of things to do in Buffalo if you're, if you're, if you're paying atten- Um, there's a lot of things to do in Buffalo if you're, if you're, if you're paying attention or and there's a lot of things to know about if you're paying attention. There's lots of, I I would encourage people to get involved. I think we've kind of gone away from people being involved with each other because they're afraid what the other person is going to think about what they think. And so I think we've seen a lot of people getting away from participating in anything that involves other people because they're afraid they're going to get hurt, canceled, whatever. Um, I would say, you know, just step up, just, just go do something, volunteer, go, 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 go ref a soccer game, go ref a softball, baseball game, um, go ref a basketball game, just, just be involved because the the community will be better if you're gonna get out there and participate in something in the community. Doesn't have to be everything, just something.
Sure. I like that.
All right. Uh, final questions before we get to the the hard ones.
Yep.
Um, from the council forum in previous weeks, what do you feel like uh, your favorite question was or or an answer that you gave that maybe you'd like to expand or clarify?
Yeah, I I think the answer that I'd like to kind of expand on and clarify is what do we, what do we do with our teenagers basically? What, what, what do, what do we offer for our teenagers here in town to to keep them active and and quote unquote, out of trouble if you want to, if you want to call it that? Um, I, no teenager likes the same thing, but they all like to stare at their phones for the most part. Uh, I know there was comments last week about people, you know, there's teenagers, they like to hang out at Walmart or the Walmart parking lot or or whatever. I mean, when I was, when I was in high school as a, as a teenager, we'd hang out, we'd, we'd park on, we'd park on the street in front of the pizza ranch and and we would just, we'd hang out and do stupid things and you know, that's, that's kind of always been what what teenagers like to do is they, there's, there was always something different that they, that we each wanted, each of our groups wanted to do. You know, some people would, would, would attend, would go to Wednesday night church services or Sunday night church services and and do things like that. And some people just didn't want to do anything. They just wanted to hang out. Maybe they'd get in a little trouble, who knows? Um, but I think, I think that the, the, where you're going to see these teenagers maybe find a little bit more of a um, an active role in things is um, going back to, I I might be guilty of this a little bit too, but maybe getting them out of the house and getting, getting a job that keeps you active, that keeps you involved with other people, that keeps, you know, you get a little bit of spending money. Um, I I think that's, I think a lot of the local businesses would love it if more teenagers, my son included, would would get out, get out of the house and and and, um, and he's looking. Um, and and just be more proactive in being a part of maybe something that builds their confidence a little bit. Not every kid wants to go to the BAC and play basketball. Not every kid wants to be on a soccer team or or a sports team. So it, it, you, you can't wedge them all into one particular uh, type of thing. So it's, it's, it's almost impossible to to, in my opinion, to say, well, we're gonna offer this to our teenagers because 10% of them might like to do that activity. And then we offer something else and 10% may want to do that activity. So the other ones feel left out. So I I, I think it's a matter of we as parents need to be able to say, hey, my kid likes to do this. Um, I'd like to get together with some of these other parents of my kids' friends and and maybe we'll figure something out for these kids to do through our own household as opposed to asking the government to do it. So um, I'm not, I I'd prefer, as some of the other council members said, uh, I'd prefer some of this start at home to to try to motivate some of these kids to to do their, you know, find something they enjoy.
Sure. I'm gonna take some creative liberty because it is our podcast. Uh, when I left that forum and I thought that was, whoever thought, I thought that was the dumbest question ever.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you on there is they're not your kids, they're not the mayor's kids. Take some responsibility for your own teenagers.
Yeah.
And and I would think if, harsh on Buffalo on anything, is we have a lot of activities.
We do.
From the high school down to elementary. And I was, I was kind of razz a little bit. We have so many. That's why we're not great at any of them.
Yeah.
That, I mean, and and I say a little bit tongue in cheek, I know we've got years that we're really good at stuff, but we're not Eden Prairie football.
No.
You know, we're not, you know, Edina insert hockey.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like that, because we do have so many great options and opportunity for kids. So I love that one. I'm just like, that's not the responsibility of a council.
Right.
That's, I left there, I'm just like, I I kind of made that face like, that's a dumb question.
I think that more had, I think that more had to do with people really wanting that 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 um, community center and.
Sure.
You know, that, that's great. I mean, I think there's other locations here um, in town that might work for something like that, whether the old Pumita or uh, gets converted into some form of uh, entertainment complex where kids can go and jump on a, you know, climb a rock wall or or something like that. It's got a great parking lot for that. I mean, there's, there's, there's places in town that I don't think the city needs to spend money on. But if there can be some opportunities, there are opportunities and 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 facilities that we, that an investor, that a private citizen can go and, excuse me, and create and um, maybe offer some of those activities to kids. I mean, you go to, as an example, you go to Monticello, they've, they've got, you know, they're bowling, they got a huge bowling alley up there. We got Huikos, which is, you know, one of the best bowling alleys in the, in the, in the, in the state of Minnesota. Um, but all of that is done through kind of private endeavors. And and so I think we can potentially do that as a, as a city here too, if we can show it what we as a community can support it.
Yeah, love it. Thanks for getting me off of my creative endeavors there. Appreciate that.
No problem.
How'd you feel about it?
Oh, yeah.
All right, here we go. What's your favorite food?
Ah, I am a big falling off the bones rib guy with with barbecue. I I um, I hate to say it, but my favorite, my favorite food is, is, is the ribs at Mill Creek. I like, I just love them falling off the bone and just greasing, falling off, nice, nice barbecue sauce, just falling off it's good stuff.
Excellent. No, uh, again, our podcast, the, the Pulaski salad. I'm not a salad guy. But that Mill Creek Pulaski salad, that's, that's choice. So good one. What's your favorite hobby?
Uh, anything, I like to travel, but really anything on or near water. Um, I'm not a fisherman, but we, we love to boat. We love to look at the water, uh, love to vacation in in places like um, Florida, um, Mexico. We, our hobbies do involve um, just looking at a lot of water.
Mm-hmm, true.
Spending a lot of time on Pulaski in in the summer times.
Cool. All expense paid trip to anywhere, where do you go?
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe everybody says this, but I am a big, I love history and I think the, I I think the greatest history book ever written is is the Holy Bible. And so when I look at that book, that's, you know, the most influential book ever written, I would love to go visit some of the places that they talk about in in the Bible and just visit the Holy Land and and just see where kind of the birthplace of modern society um, originated and just, you know, see where Jesus walked and and his disciples and just all of that. I I think the all expense is that for me to to visit maybe Rome and parts of Turkey and Jerusalem. Those would be all areas I would love to visit.
Very cool.
Not everybody says that.
No, really?
No.
So. Not can, must have been Cancun.
A close second.
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna look to that camera right there and what do you want to tell any last messages to the voters?
Well, any last messages to the voters? I just would love your vote. I I am here to support the community. Um, I, I don't have anything to gain in this. I I really just want to be able to give back and be part of, I like the idea of of supporting what Buffalo is gonna look like after I am long gone from from this earth. So um, I want to be able to give back to a community and just be a community that I plan on retiring and we never plan on selling our house or ever moving again. So I just want to be able to, all right. Um, I, I just, I want to be able to just give back and and maybe provide, um, I think as you age, even if not even as you age, uh, but as you get more knowledge in your life, um, you should be able to give that back to the community around you, whether it's or even just your fam, you know, giving back to your family, giving back to your neighbors, giving back to the community, giving back as a coach, as a referee, as a mentor of some kind. Um, I just think it's important that that we use what we've learned in our lives to to better, to better, better other things around us as well.
Brian, thanks, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for tuning in to the um, council member candidates for the city of Buffalo. Uh, thank you so much for Brad, Brian and Jamison for coming in and expanding on what they can provide for us. And thank you so much as the listener for providing some of that, uh, some of these questions on here. I know Mark, Luke and I all appreciate it, all the support you give us. And again, hopefully that we've brought some value to you. Um, and then you can continue listening. We get out the vote for the Buffalo Community Podcast. I'm Tyler Reese.
I'm Mark Benzer. And he's Luke.
Oh yeah, he doesn't have a camper on.
Yeah.
Thanks for listening to the Buffalo Community Podcast produced by Edlin Media. You can find us on Facebook and YouTube as well as anywhere you listen to podcasts.